Good evening and welcome to the Gresham Barlow Board of Education Special Meeting on June 17. Roll call. In attendance is Chris Howitt, Chair, Kathy Keithley, Vice Chair, David Liggettich, Director, Myra Gomez, Director, Holly Wiegelman, Director, Blake Peterson, Director, absent is Sean Ferens. We only have one agenda item, and so I will need approval of the meeting agenda. This is a termination hearing. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Kathy, seconded by Blake to approve the agenda. Any discussion about the agenda? Otherwise, a motion to approve. So any questions about the agenda item? See none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And my screen is split, so I'm gonna have to keep going back and forth. Myra, were you a yes?
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
Okay, there. I am trying to get my screen to show everything, so I can see half you guys at one time. All right, so we have an agenda. I'm gonna read a statement about the hearing and also read a statement about the meeting. Just to confirm, the meeting is being held virtually. It is an open public meeting pursuant to Oregon House Bill 2560 print three print A, which was effective January 1st, 2022. All meetings held by a governing body of a public body excluding executive sessions must provide to members of the general public to the extent reasonably possible an opportunity to access and attend the meeting by telephone, video, or other electronic or virtual means. The board retains the ability to decide in-person meetings. Tonight's meeting is a termination hearing, and the board will convene for the purpose of hearing the recommendation of the superintendent for the dismissal of a licensed contract teacher. The teacher has requested to have consideration of this dismissal take place in open session as opposed to executive session. My name's Chris Howitt, and I'm the Board Chair of the Gresham Barlow School District. I will be presiding over tonight's meeting. Seated with the board for tonight's hearing is District Legal Counsel Brian Hungerford. The procedure for tonight's meeting will be as follows. The superintendent's designee, John Cook, will present to the board the superintendent's recommendation for the dismissal of contract teacher Bill Martin. The presentation will last no longer than 20 minutes. There will be a timer that will show the time. Following the presentation of the designee, Mr. Martin or his representatives will have an opportunity to present any statement or documentary evidence that he wishes to have the board consider prior to considering the dismissal recommendation. If there are representatives or others that are assisting Mr. Martin, the total combined time that there is is 20 minutes. There is not an opportunity to call witnesses or cross-examine district representatives. Following Mr. Martin's presentation, Mr. Cook shall have up to 10 minutes to present any rebuttal information or make any desired closing statement to the board. Following that statement, Mr. Martin or his representatives have an additional 10 minutes to make any desired closing statement to the board. Board members will then have an opportunity to ask questions of either party. Questions will relate to the issue at hand. Following the presentations, the board will conduct any necessary deliberations in public and take action on the recommendation. The board will then follow its action with official written notice. Unless there are any questions, the superintendent's designee, Mr. Cook, may proceed.
I do have a question.
All right, Mr. Martin?
Why are we not in person?
It's up to the board's purview whether or not we have it in person. We're having it virtually so that all board members could be able to attain the special meeting that was not on our original calendar.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Chair. I have a statement prepared. I want to start off by acknowledging that when Mr. Martin presents, in a few minutes, you may hear talk about bond fraud and that this allegation is connected to Superintendent Hughes' recommendation to terminate Mr. Martin's position. Don't be confused, because tonight the administration is recommending his dismissal from the Gresham Barlow School District based on ORS 342-865, Section 1, Paragraph D, Neglective Duty, and Section 1, Paragraph C, Insubordination. It is completely separate from any allegations about the 2016 bond. Before I go any further, I want to remind each of you that you have a copy of the letter we sent to Mr. Martin that explains in detail the facts related to our recommendation, which begin at the start of the 2324 school year. I'll summarize these facts for you. In September and October of 2023, we engaged in a thorough, interactive process to respond to Mr. Martin's request for accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act. These interactions led to a list of approved accommodations that allowed Mr. Martin to come to work and meet his work requirements in accordance with the expressed limitations. Despite the offered accommodations, Mr. Martin did not return to work. On October 17th, 2023, Mr. Martin was informed in writing that three options were available: Accept the accommodations and report to work, Reject the accommodations and request a leave of absence, or contact us to receive additional clarification about the accommodations we offered. Mr. Martin responded by email on October 20th, 2023, informing us he was unwilling to return to work despite the accommodations and was not willing to request or accept a leave of absence. He also rejected our offer to have additional communication because he did not think it would be productive. On October 24th, 2023, the district responded in writing to summarize his employment status. A copy of the summary is in the letter that has been shared with you. Essentially, it states that the administration's understanding was that Mr. Martin was physically and mentally unable to return to work under the accommodations the district agreed to. Mr. Martin rejected an unpaid leave of absence and that he was either unwilling or unable to offer other potential accommodations that had not yet been considered that he believed would allow him to perform the essential functions of his job. In that October 24th, 2023 letter, it stated that he had until October 27th, 2023 to inform us if he was going to apply to the sick leave bank or take us up on the offer of unpaid leave and that if we did not hear back from him by October 27th, 2023, we would begin the termination process. Mr. Martin did not reply to the October 24th, 2023 email, did not report to work, and made no effort to account for his absence. Due to ongoing litigation brought by the Martins against the Gresham Barlow School District, our attorneys recommended that further action by the district be held in abeyance at that time. That litigation has since settled completely in the district's favor. As of today, Mr. Martin has not returned to work, has not applied for days from the sick leave bank, and has not requested an unpaid leave of absence. Also, as of today, Mr. Martin has given no indication he intends to return to work and has been absent from work without approved leave since October. In summary, it is undisputed that Mr. Martin has been absent from work without approved leave since October, nor has he accounted for his absences or provided notice to the district of his intentions. He has made a choice to abandon his position. He also failed to account for those absences, which left the district in a position of not knowing whether we needed to continue to search for a substitute, hire a long-term temporary teacher, or post his job as a regular position. Coming to work is one of the most basic duties for any position, especially a teacher. Students need continuity of instruction and predictability. Also, when directed to account for his absences by following process and protocols in place, such as logging into the subsystem, Mr. Martin took no action. As I stated in the beginning, we recommended that Mr. Martin's position be terminated for two reasons. First, he failed to maintain prompt and regular attendance, which is an essential job function listed in his job description. He has not been at work or have an approved leave of absence since October. His refusal to return to work violates ORS 342-865-1D, Neglective Duty. The second reason is Insubordination, as described in ORS 342.865-1C. On October 17th, 2023, Mr. Martin was given a clear and lawful directive to return to work or properly account for his absences. This order was willfully ignored. Moreover, Mr. Martin informed us that he would not return to work, would not take an unpaid leave of absence, and would not engage in further discussion because he felt it would not be worthwhile. All of the elements required to meet the definition of Insubordination as described in the ORS are present. In our October 24th, 2023 communication to Mr. Martin, the district was unambiguous about the consequences if he failed to adhere to the directives in the October 24th, 2023 notice. It stated, "If we do not hear from you by the above date," which referred to October 27th, 2023, "we will begin the termination process." Now, I'll quickly turn it over to Superintendent Hugh for a statement as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Chair Howitt, the Board of Directors, as Superintendent of Schools, it is my duty and per statute recommend the dismissal of Bill Martin from the Gresham Barlow School District based on ORS 242.865, Section 1D, Neglective Duty, and ORS 342.865, Section 1C, Insubordination. Thank you.
Okay. To close my statement, Chair, I want to reiterate what Superintendent Hugh just said. This recommendation is about neglect of duty and Insubordination and nothing else. This concludes the GBSD statement.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, the time clock has been reset by our Board Secretary, Sarah Avery, and you may start when you are ready, and she will start with the time.
All right, I just gotta get my technology app to share my screen here. So if I click at the share the screen, I'll be able to share my presentation then?
I believe I'll have Sarah Avery answer that question for you. We'll make sure that your time doesn't start before you get that ready. So Sarah, will you make sure?
I think I'll have to unshare my screen with the timer, and then I would just have to notify you when that time is up, because I don't believe we can both share screens at the same time. So I can unshare mine, but then you wouldn't be able to see the timer. So I could give some time cues of how much time is left. Chair Howitt, if that is acceptable?
That would be acceptable. Is, I'm not sure, Sarah, I'll let you make the call on three minutes or five minutes. Three minutes sounds like an appropriate time to wrap up. So if you would give a three-minute notice when it's done, when it's getting close to done, and then as soon as Mr. Martin is able to share his screen and share his presentation, then if you would start the time.
I'm still getting the host's disabled sharing.
Let me see what I can do on my end. It shows that all panelists could share, so just a moment. Mr. Martin, go ahead and try again. I clicked on the settings again, so hopefully that should work.
All right, it looks like it's gonna work. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, it does appear that your screen is visible to the people that are in attendance, so thank you.
Okay. I'm restarting. Just quickly, Mr. Cook missed the whole year that I was in there, '22 and '23, when I didn't have an ADA. This is not about the ADA. But since we have district values up here, hopefully, and I've can go through this, I'm a little cut off on here, but that you guys are gonna carefully manage every resource of people, time, and facilities and finance. So I think we're gonna have a struggle to find that in this. And then last, integrity. Our conduct is forthright, respectful, and sincere, and our faith in one another is upheld by a common bond of honesty. I think we're gonna struggle to see some honesty in here. And I will share this PowerPoint with anyone. They can send to me at GBSDvalues@gmail.com, and I will take you through this. Some of it, as a board, you already know most of this and are not choosing to deal with it. So some of this is just for the public record. So on 1/22/2020, I turned in bond fraud to James Hugh, and I will go through later. I really didn't realize I had. It was part of just my concern of what was going on at Barlow. We met on that date. There was never any follow-up from Mr. Hugh or any GBSD administration, and I have filed a whistleblower complaint internally in GB, with GBSD. And again, it's gone uninvestigated, and I hope today what the evidence that I'll present will move that one forward. So my wife, Mrs. Martin, and I, back between me and I will apologize for that, but she captured the meeting notes here and sent them to herself. And so this is why it was sent on the 29th. She was recording this. And as you folks on the board have already read this, I provided it. There's a lot of concerning issues, but I just want to go down to the nearly the last page of this where, and again, it wasn't the number one thing that we were bringing, bond fraud. We were bringing issues with the building and that the building, San Barlow High School, is smaller, has fewer conference rooms, less classrooms, got rid of our testing rooms and computer labs. And at the time, Mr. Hugh did not seem to, was not aware of this. And so I did present bond fraud to Mr. Hugh, which I think, believe as Deputy Superintendent, something should have gone on with that. So evidence of bond fraud, which again, then if I'm providing evidence of bond fraud here, the question now is if there's bond fraud, or you folks should be asking. We always look into bond fraud, and we'll figure it out, and we'll take care of it. But on the pre-bond design here, the comprehensive renovation and classroom additions is what's claimed on this as you're pushing this out to the public. The Voters Guide here mentions three times relief overcrowding in our classrooms here, and that's what was sold to the public on the Voters Guide there. In Gresham Barlow's own dedication page here that I've taken off of your website, where we're talking about San Barlow High School, "The school bond funded significant improvements and enhanced teaching and activity spaces and safety and security while increasing the number of classrooms." Which again, that would follow what was promised to the public and the staff. I also highlighted the auditorium and stage improvements. We'll get to that, but there's less seats in the auditorium after this project. But here, Mr. Cook sent this, and he said it's not bond fraud, but Deputy Superintendent on May 13th, '24 is declaring there was no loss of classroom space, which I still argue there is, but the high school started with 64 and ended with 64. And right there, that's definition of bond fraud, because you promised more classrooms. So this is concerning and should be looked into. We're looking at what we're talking about, fraud here. Fails to correct a false impression that the person previously created it or confirmed. I don't wish this to be happening. I don't want to be here talking about this. But here we are. So from Bruce Schmidt's deposition, and it's just the highlighted part where he's being asked about the bond project. "How were you involved in the bond project?" Answer: "I was involved in everything in relation to the bond project." Question: You were? Okay? Answer: Yes. Question: Do you know if the number of classrooms increased in the school as a result of the remodel? Answer: No, we didn't. I don't think we increased the total number of rooms, maybe by a couple, just based on the way things were configured back and count, but I don't remember that. I might have missed something because of my screen there. I don't remember that. That wasn't a concern or goal? Answer: No. Well, it clearly was a concern and goal, because it was within the voter guide statement, and Gresham Barlow bragged about making more rooms. Now, also in the voter guide statement is Mr. Schmidt endorsing the statement from the teachers and the classified staff here, where we have overcrowding in the classroom, and there's only one way. Build rooms and add teachers reduces our class sizes. So he isn't well aware that we need more rooms, but we didn't get more rooms. As you folks already know, I've submitted this comment, and again, there was no response by anyone. So instead of looking into this, if you don't believe me, we should look into this. But that's not the position you guys are taking. You're taking the, we don't comment. Well, and we don't comment because it's a personnel issue. Well, I think every bond fraud issue is probably a personnel one, so I think that's a false statement there. I've attempted to deal with this, and my wife's ADA issues there at the lowest level, and I'm not gonna drag everyone through this, but I have emails here that are dated and show trying to get this done without having to go to legal matters. Again, trying to issue, solve it with you folks. Another one, this one's a good read too, but we're trying to work with you, and we've followed all the steps and every process, and you folks won't follow your own policies. So this is one, two, three of you here. Dr. Gomez, Ms. Wiegelman, and Esther Ferens, again, reaching out. And at this point, I don't have a lawsuit. There was a bully report, and again, wanting to talk to you folks and figure this out. And just down here, the late reply I get from Ms. Gomez is, "You're claiming I filed the lawsuit," which I hadn't. It's in about a month I do file a lawsuit. But I don't know if you're making this up, if someone misinformed you so that you would say something like this, but I've engaged at very low levels, and here we are at my termination hearing. This is more that you folks have seen, other people will look at this later. And again, I am calling out that there's been bond fraud at Barlow, and the board and those administrators don't have an excuse for not looking into this. So now we get into more of why I can't get back to work, because we're looking at, I've been accused of false allegations officially by my principal Schmidt, and I'm gonna take you through that. So the, and I'm not sure if I can. There we go. This is an email I received from Deborah James in January 2022, and it's come to my attention during your recent absence, students were overheard speculating the reason of your absence. I've been said that I'm not supposed to do this or talk to anyone. Well, I didn't talk to anyone. At the bottom, I reply, "Dear Ms. James, we invite a full investigation into this. Ms. Martin and myself have never discussed this with any student or with any student present. It would be inappropriate. We do have a record of Mr. Schmidt making false accusations and providing misinformation. Sincerely, Bill Martin." There was never reply from Ms. James or any administrator. The only administrator above her in that the old chart was Mr. Hugh. So I'm probably guessing Mr. Hugh would not stop this investigation, which you wouldn't want to investigate because of this. On 1/13/22, Mr. Schmidt's email falsely accuses me of speaking to students about my lawsuit, which is something I would never do, which I denied and which I requested an investigation. And in apparent overreach, Mr. Schmidt recount is not possible, as I could not have discussed the lawsuit on 12, that was filed on 12/29/21 with my students. I was out of San Barlow High School from 12/17 until 1/17 due to my father's death. So that was not possible. Now, Mr. Schmidt's false accusations took place on 1/13. That also times with when he received notice of the lawsuit. The following are the emails between Mr. Schmidt and Ms. James, just submitting what I'm talking about. And I'm not gonna go through those, which again, anyone watching can pull this up later and take a look at that. It just confirms what I'm talking about. I filed a complaint using GBSD policy, and nothing's happening. I follow another complaint here, which follows where he lied on a declaration. And as my last sentence, you guys are gonna read a lot of this tomorrow. I've already read your report, but this is what's happening in the district. "It's been my unfortunate experience as a 20-year GBSD employee. The accountability has been only upheld from the direction of top of GBSD downward." You're not keeping your people accountable in the district office. That's why you're gonna go through that report tomorrow that I've already read, and it's saying the exact same thing. This is more between myself and Mr. Cook on all the same things, and I'm not gonna take everyone through that, because you folks have already read this. It's gonna be for the public record and for someone else I would like to follow and actually take a look at this. This will not stand. I have no doubt of that. So how can any GBSD employee feel safe when GBSD refuses to follow its own policies and investigate a valid claim of workplace harassment? Not only workplace harassment, but turning in fraud. You guys are not sending the right message to people that are honest and upstanding, trying to do their best. This really go through, but is the declaration of Mr. Schmidt, and where he makes several false statements, perjures himself in this, that are provable about my employment there at Barlow. And again, same thing. It's just refuting and showing you what's going on with that. I don't need to take it. You folks on the board have already gotten this and have chosen to ignore it. So I'm wrapping this one up, so we're at the end here. This is the situation I've been under in March 17th of '22. Mr. Murzaro, which is the attorney that Mr. Hugh works with, sent my side. "We're only interested in talking settlement if the Martins are willing to discuss their resignation as part of agreement." There's no daylight in there. That's, I need to leave. We're not gonna do anything unless you agree to leave. And at that point, I agreed to leave. My wife, Mrs. Martin, myself, agreed to resign, but the district does not set mediation until May 10th of '23, and the day before mediation, for separation, the position flips from only discussing my resignation to only discussing my return to work. Again, that, I don't know how I'm supposed to handle this. This is the position that you folks and Mr. Hugh have put me in. Here's a little thing on perjury, and then I got put in a few of the sides of my schedule that shows that Mr. Schmidt is lying about me in my in his declaration. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. I show that it was approximately 15 minutes, so I will move to Mr. Cook at this point for a 10-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr., hang on just a second. Let me just make sure. I realized, Mr. Martin, you did have five more minutes. I did not know if there was anyone else that you wanted to speak on your behalf, since you did not use up the full 20 minutes. I would assume that if you wanted to, you would have said something, so.
Sorry. This, how, I do, Mr. Shear has got a statement, but I figured that would be read in the rebuttal.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Chair. You did hear a lot about bond fraud and other associated allegations right there. I want to remind the board that Mr. Martin's concerns related to a hostile work environment, workplace harassment, and discrimination were thoroughly weighed by the courts and dismissed on summary judgment. The GBSD agrees with the court, therefore considers all complaints and investigations resolved. What you did not hear from Mr. Martin is anything relevant to being absent without leave for almost the entirety of this school year. The focus of our recommendation is neglect of duty and Insubordination. Mr. Martin should be dismissed because he has refused to come to work since October of 2023. This is despite the fact that even when provided with repeated opportunities, he has not given us any acceptable reasons. He has not shown up for work and has not accounted for the time, and he has been absent and is purposely trying to cloud the facts with accusations about bond fraud and other. about bond fraud and other allegations. That's my statement.
Thank you. And are there any other statements from the district or your other statement this evening, Mr. Cook?
I do not believe so. Superintendent Hugh, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Right. Okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Martin, uh, you have an available ten minutes and you said that perhaps Bruce Share would be speaking on your behalf.
I believe so.
All right. And I did see Bruce on the deal. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Bruce.
Okay. So I have a statement um, by legal counsel provided by GBEA for Bill Martin. The board should reject the superintendent's recommendation to terminate Mr. Martin for several reasons. First, Mr. Martin is being terminated because of a years long campaign by the district to retaliate against him and his wife, Barlow High School teacher Laura Martin, for identifying issues with the district's use of bond funds and the reconstruction of Barlow High School. Mr. and Mrs. Martin highlighted promises and statements made of voters to approve the bond that the district never followed through on, including not using bond funds to expand the number of classrooms at Barlow. Over a period of years, the district's leadership retaliated against Mr. and Mrs. Martin for their courageous whistleblowing, bringing light to abuse of the bond funding process. Second, Mr. Martin is being terminated because he also stood up for the rights of himself and Mrs. Martin to be free from retaliation by their supervisors and district leadership. As Mr. Martin has described repeatedly over the years and will do and and has done so again today. He and Laura Martin were subject to abusive conduct by various district administrators and have sought to hold the district accountable for its behavior throughout numerous school board complaints, agency complaints and civil litigation. Mr. Martin's political, uh, sorry, legally protected activity does not give the district the right to terminate his employment, even if Mr. Martin leveled criticism of district leaders. Third, Mr. Martin is being terminated because he asked for an ADA accommodations for his disability and refused to accept the district's legally insufficient accommodations offered as a response. The district has a history of marginalizing and ignoring educators who seek ADA accommodations. And Mr. Martin's case is another example of that troubling practice. Finally, Mr. Martin is being terminated without due process as required by the law and by the district collective bargaining agreement with GBEA. At every term, the district has merely gone through the motions and evaluating Mr. Martin's complaints, or worse, refused to address them at all, hiding behind the excuse that there was litigation ongoing between Mr. Martin and the district. Even this meeting is an illustration of the district's various attempts to avoid due process for Mr. Martin. Holding a Zoom board meeting instead of an in-person meeting for no apparent reason other than to prevent the board from seeing the wide community's support for Mr. Martin is a prime example of the district's approach to Mr. Martin over the years. If the board adopts the superintendent's recommendation and terminates Mr. Martin, it will expose itself to extensive legal liability. Mr. Martin has various appeal rights and also recourse to the courts. Mr. Martin has been willing to reach and negotiate a resolution to his employment status with the district, but the district has refused to engage in those negotiations. We suggest that the board refuse the superintendent's recommendation and instead direct the superintendent to do one of two things. One, bring Mr. Martin back to work under the set of reasonable ADA accommodations that he has requested, none of which are an undue burden on the district. Or two, postpone a termination decision and instead negotiate a meaningful resolution to Mr. Martin's various claims that can bring a dignified resolution to Mr. Martin's long and distinguished teaching career with the district. That's it.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Um, at this point, uh, the board has an opportunity to ask questions of either party. Questions will relate to the issue at hand, which is the insubordination and neglect of duty. The questions will not refer to any conversation regarding the bond or any allegations related to that. This is strictly a hearing regarding employment. So, uh, since I can't see all of the screens, if you would like to ask a question, if you would use the raised hand button and that will move you up into the front screen. Questions can be asked to, um, Mr. Martin, uh, Bruce Share, Mr. Hugh or or Mr. Cook, and I know that Angela Freeman is also on the line, um, that if there's a question related to that. And um, so I will ask if there are any questions of the board and there is not a time limit on, um, how long the board can ask questions, but I would expect that the questions would be succinct and, uh, not, I'll just leave it at that. Um, so any questions by board members? Uh, Kathy. Kathy, go ahead.
Yes, sorry, I'm being technically challenged. My question is, um, Mr. Martin, you said that, um, at some point in your notes, there was and a request that you, part of the settlement be that you resign, and then it was changed to, um, wanting to go, you go for you to go back to work. So at some point though, whenever that was, there was still no return to work. So that's my question, um, about why, what prompted you not to return to work?
Well, using the ADA, because the Gresham Barlow was not following its own policies. I do have diabetes and because of the situation, I have PTSD and use it finding a and it's you because the Gresham Barlow School District had told me that you were going only negotiate on my resignation. So I went over a year, the year that Mr. Cook's not talking about, the twenty two twenty three school year that we seem to are just not talking about. Um, and I needed, I I felt like the only way to maybe get back was to engage with the ADA and then hopefully get you folks to actually follow your own GBSD policies. Uh, where you would look into these things.
Thank you, Kathy. Are there any other questions from board members?
I, I have a question on the same vein that was prompted by Kathy's question, and that is, so in that, in that chain of sort of evidence that you presented, you cited a specific email talking about, um, from Ms. Mercer uh, saying that we'll only negotiate based on a resignation. Um, do you have similar evidence related to um, only negotiating based on a return to work? I think, I think those are just your notes and what you showed us.
Yes, that was switched twenty, less than twenty four hours on May ninth for the meeting that was set for May tenth. So I I believe like that, well, we were, you guys were going to publicly fire me last year in, um, the end of February, beginning of March, and that I think as it got public, that was decided not to go forward. And then we went that the, again, I believe Mr. Hugh said the the ten or twelve weeks in the future was the mediation to for separation. And then the, like I say, the evening after, late afternoon before is when my attorney was notified that we're only going to discuss my return to work. So that's I don't, I have it. I could get it from my attorney, but that that's what hap- what happened.
Uh, Mr. Peterson, do you still have a question?
I have an alter, another question, and that comes from the rebuttal statement that, um, the ADA accommodations were not, did not meet a legal threshold. And I, I would like to ask, um, on what basis that statement is made.
Um, Mr. Berish is not available, that my, the OEA attorney, that's the person you're going to have to direct that to.
Okay. And that that definition was not at all subject, uh, or brought forth in the matters of litigation.
Well, that's a different story. Uh, Mr. Cook didn't respond when I, my, my situation has not been adjudicated in any way. Uh, it's not been before a court. And so, uh, yes, my wife got summary judgment. Our attorney fumbled at the line. It's not for lack of facts. Uh, we ran ran into a retired judge that didn't want to go through the two hundred and fifty pages of, uh, motion summary judgment response. Um, so it's all valid. I mean, the Bureau of Labor found substantial evidence for her and the ADA violations that she experienced. Um, and I may have just, I might be rambling now. I, it, the, could you refresh me on the question?
Yes, it, uh, and I, and I'm going to just clarify, I'm going to clarify some things that I'm hearing because I, I want to make sure I, I have an accurate perspective. The bully claims, my understanding is that was subject to a court reviewed by a court.
That's true. That was in the summary judgment.
Okay. And then okay. Uh, the, so the substantive question kind of at, at the beginning is uh, the claim was made by Mr. Share on your behalf that the ADA accommodations proposed by the district did not meet a legal threshold. I'm trying to determine is that something that was established by a legal authority or is it a matter of perspective between OEA and the district?
I don't know. Uh, you're, you would again, uh, Mr. Berish is the person that could answer that. I'm not sure Bruce knows that either.
No, I don't know the details or background to that question.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
I've been willing to meet. You guys could have asked me questions without doing this.
All right. Um, I don't see any more questions by the board. Um, so that would conclude the presentation. Looking one more time to make sure. Okay. So then following the presentation, the board will conduct any necessary deliberations and take action on the recommendation. And the board will then follow, uh, with official written notice. Um, and so there are a couple of potential motions by the board, um, that could take action. One that would be to accept the recommendation for both insubordination and collective duty and have Mr. Martin dismissed from employment. One is to decline to accept that recommendation. And then there are two other potential. One that would be just the insubordination and not the neglect of duty. Or one would be the neglect of duty and not insubordination, but either of those would revolt, uh, sorry, result in a dismissal of employment. Uh, so those are the options that we have this evening that we would need to take action on. And I would just confirm if there were any other questions regarding those statements that the board would like to clarify with, um, Mr. Cook or Mr. Hugh.
Director Howard, I, I have a question internal to the board, um, that you'll, you'll let me know if this should have a sitting motion before I ask this question, but I, um, there were also, um, threats of, um, of litigation brought forth by Mr. Share on behalf of Mr. Martin.
Well, actually, uh, you mean going forward from this point or previously?
Yes, risk of, um, yes, an accusation, a threat of additional litigative risk on the district and the board.
I'm going to have, before you go any further with that, I'm going to have Brian Hungerford has raised his hand and so I will let him weigh in on this.
Thank you, Chair Howard. Good evening. Uh, just to frame the, the context of the situation for the board. Um, the board's taking action under the Oregon Fair Dismissal Law. And that's ORS three forty two eight four five and ORS three forty two eight six five or eight nine five rather. And under that framework, only the board can dismiss a contract teacher such as Mr. Martin from employment, and they can only do so upon recommendation of the superintendent. So you have a recommendation from Superintendent Q that Mr. Martin be dismissed. And it's, it's the board's duty now tonight to act on that recommendation, to either affirm it or overturn it. Should the board affirm that, uh, recommendation for dismissal, Mr. Martin would be dismissed effective today's date. And he would then have appeal rights under the Fair Dismissal Law. That appeal, uh, should he choose to exercise it, would go to what's known as the Fair Dismissal Appeals Board. That's a three member panel that's appointed by the governor. And they hear cases exclusively, uh, dealing with contract teacher dismissals, uh, licensed teacher dismissals in Oregon. And so that would be his appeal mechanism. Um, uh, I can't comment on any, you know, additional litigation that might be brought. I have no knowledge of that or the grounds for that. Uh, but the direct appeal of the board's action tonight would be, uh, under the framework of that, uh, Fair Dismissal Law.
So that, did that get at what was going to be your question, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right. Uh, so looking any other questions from the board? And so we are being requested to take action regarding, uh, three of the proposed motions. So is there a member that would, uh, make one of the motions if there's no further questions?
I, I'm navigating to the language, Director Howard.
Okay.
Director Howard, I would move that the board adopt the superintendent's recommendation that Bill Martin be dismissed from employment with the district on grounds of insubordination and neglect of duty effective today's date.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Sorry, I didn't see who. Is that Holly? Thank you. Thank you. All right. So it has been moved by Director Peterson, seconded by Director Riggelman to adopt the superintendent's recommendation that Bill Martin be dismissed from employment with the district on the grounds of insubordination and neglect of duty effective today's date. Is there any further discussion about the motion? Seen none, no hands raised. I will do a voice call vote. Chair Howard votes yes. Director Peterson?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Keithley?
Yes.
Uh, Director Liggettich?
Yes.
Director Riggelman?
Yes.
Director Gomez?
Yes.
We show that as six zero unanimous. And with that, uh, the board will do the, uh, notice with official written notice. And with that, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.